Camden, 2020 Camden Planning Board Meeting. Today, we are having a public hearing on a site plan review for the town of Camden wastewater department. I need to ask if any members have any conflict of interest or bias regarding the application before them. Seeing none, hearing none, proceed. Yeah?
Rosie, one more comment. You draw a matter, you have to do a roll call vote, so you gotta just take everyone's name and ask their vote when you, we get to votes, okay?
Okay, okay, can people say aye, cause not?
Yes, but you have to specifically ask for Jeff Senders and Jeff has to say aye, so, okay?
Okay, okay, so voting members are tonight, it's Matt, Jeff, Ethan, right? Is that everybody? Okay, alright. So, um, do you want me to read through the full procedure for the public hearing?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
And so, understanding, maybe just preface it with understanding that due to the COVID crisis, state of emergency that the state's under, we are doing public hearings through this process and people have been offered the opportunity for all public meetings to provide comment prior to the meeting and during the meeting via YouTube.
Okay, thank you, so I'm sure everybody heard that, yes. So, the procedure for a public hearing, number one, the applicant or representatives of the applicant will make a presentation of the facts of the application to the public. The chair will then call on the public to be heard. Speakers must be Camden voters, business owners, property owners, taxpayers, or representatives of the applicant. Number two, all speakers must state their name, residence, and any connection to the applicant, application in order to establish standing. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the board and any requests for replies shall be made through the chair. Letters from individuals who are not in attendance will be read by the chair, or possibly Jeremy tonight. Yes, there will be two parts to the public hearing. Only one opportunity, only one opportunity to speak will be allowed per speaker during each part of the public hearing. Comments must be relevant to the approval criteria for the application. The chair will exclude any irrelevant or unduly repetitious comments. Number four, after comments from the public, the first part of the hearing will be closed so that the board can discuss the application with the applicant. No public comment will be allowed at this time. Number five, the second part of the public hearing will then be open for final remarks from interested parties with the same rules of order as in the first part. Number six, the second part of the public hearing will then be closed and the board will have its final discussions with the applicant. The board will then proceed with its deliberations or continue the application to a future date. Number seven, no public hearing and no deliberation will continue past 10:00 PM. That's a procedure. So that being said, I believe we have an applicant who will make a presentation.
I, I think, prior to that, I think normally too, Rosie, is that the code off for the planning department just states out what the project is briefly and their, yeah, standards are met and all that, so. I'd like to enter, everyone got shared the memo that I, I had drafted and we'll just enter that into the record, if you will. I can just read it for practical purposes. So, the site before you is for the proposed improvements to the town's wastewater treatment plant. Voters approved required improvements and upgrades in June of 2018. The site plan applications to upgrade the facility, including the demolition of existing steel sludge storage tank, the demolition of the air raid grit tank, superstructure, as well as the control building mono rail, and the construction of a new 2,432 square foot sludge dewatering building in the same location as, as the existing sludge storage tank, and the construction of a new 540 square foot headworks building to be constructed over the existing headworks channel. In addition, the, the plan includes an emergency generator next to the existing control building with a pad size of 21 by 20, or 21 by 12 and a half feet. Also proposed is removal and replacement of all the pavement on the site as well as one new paved driveway to the headworks building. Site drainage patterns will remain unchanged and will include replacing some underdrain piping, a new catch basin and the removal and replacement of two new catch basins. Removal and replacement with new, two new catch basins. The reason the projects before the board is Article 12, Section 1, subsection 1 of the town zoning ordinance. This is a proposal for a new, new construction of a non-residential building or structure including accessory buildings of more than 1,000 square feet. Per Article 12, Section 2, Procedure 4, Steve Wilson and I, who are both officers for the town, reviewed the application for completeness and for compliance with the zoning ordinance. And we found that the application is complete and is in conformance with the ordinance and that the applicant has standing. And I, I think that, that is it, if we can just make that part of the record. Maybe do a motion to do that and then we can get to the applicant to give their presentation.
Okay, so can I make a motion to accept the summary from Jeremy as, and enter that as part of the record? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, Ethan seconds. So, all those in favor, let's see, should we go one by one? We've got a yes from Jeff Senders. I've got a yes from Ethan. Got a yes from Matt Siegel, we got a thumbs up from Matt Siegel, alright. And, and I'll give it two thumbs up, okay. So, that's, that's four to zero unanimous.
Correct.
Okay. Can we keep going?
You can.
Okay, so I would ask the representative to share the application, how does this work when it's all on Zoom?
So, the applicant will do what he's going to do, he's going to be sharing his screen and explain it to you all. And we also shared this with you all digitally, so you have that and you had, you know, to have paper copies to you, so. He'll go through the plans and explain what he's proposing to do. And then, and then we'll open up the public hearing.
Okay, that sounds fantastic. So, is this Mr. Bol?
Well, Dave, did you want to say something first, or you want me to? Can we hear him? You're on mute on your phone, it looks like.
Yeah. Dave, we can't hear you.
Nope. Okay.
Uh-oh, Kevin, it may be all you.
Okay. I'm Kevin Aubrey from Wright Pierce Engineers. We've been retained by the town to design the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. And I helped, I prepared the application with Dave. And I was going to kind of run through the plan portion of what's in the application and kind of do some quick overviews and step through the process, is that a good process, Jeremy, do you think, or?
I think that's exactly what you should done.
Alright, so I'm going to try to share my screen and share, let's see. Are you seeing an aerial photo of the plant?
Yep.
Okay, great. I just wanted to start it out, this was a drone, we used the drone for survey for the, for the project and we had some aerial photos taken, so this kind of shows the entire plant layout, just to give everybody perspective of the existing conditions and existing buildings at the treatment plant. And I can start, this is the big steel sludge storing, storage tank, existing dewatering building, sludge digesters, blower building for the digesters, secondary clarifiers, and can people see my pointer when I point to things on the screen?
Yep.
Okay, great, perfect. This is a return sludge pump building, the aeration tanks are behind that. And there's the blower building for the aeration tanks, this is the grit tank and the superstructure. And this is the control building that holds the offices, the electrical entrance and current laboratory, and that's the monorail out back. So, I should. And did you see that change, is this? This is, this is the sludge storage tank that's going to be demolished as part of the project. And that is the location of the new dewatering building that's being proposed, and I'll show you plans for that. And the other structures being demolished is a superstructure over the sled, over the grit tank. And this monorail system back here that used to be for the chlorine gas cylinders when the, when the plant was originally constructed. So now, here, here are the plans that we included as part of the application, and I can step through those for you. This shows the existing site, the overall site. You can see, the round in red is the approximate property line. The zoning, there's a B1 zone in Zone B. Goes through the existing dewatering building. In red here are the structures that are being demolished, that's the sludge storage tank, superstructure over the grit tank, and then the monorail behind the control building. The next plan shows requirements for the contractor that, that will be constructing this, the erosion control requirements for the main DEP, so we have a, a drawing for that, and we also have the spec section that was included as an attachment to the submittal. To give you an idea of the requirements for the erosion control during the project. The next few drawings, we split the site into two places to enlarge the scale so we could see a little better. So, this just shows the general layout, this area right here is the new headworks building that's being constructed over the headworks channel. And I can give more information on that if people want to hear about it. This is the new portion of the driveway that's going to be built for, for access to that building. There'll be a, a storage container that, for the screenings that come out of that, that, that need to be disposed of, so there'll be an access drive for the equipment to get down there. This is where the generator is going to be placed, and that's existing control building, so in front of the control building, if I zoom in, hopefully that's zooming in on people's screens. The control building, we're building a handicap rap, ramp for ADA accessibility to the control building where the offices are, and putting some handicap, a handicap parking spot out front. Whoops. This shows the second half of the site showing where the new dewatering building is going to be located. The watering is a sludge dewatering process, the sludge that's removed from the plant gets dewatered and then the dewatered sludge is trucked for composting, that, that the town currently has a contract for. So, this just shows where that location is, this is the existing dewatering building that will be abandoned as part of the project. This shows the site grading, proposed grading, which we're not really changing any grading, just fine tuning a little bit. So, that, that's all this shows, and this shows a little more detail for the new headworks building, and I have cut sheets or, or drawings showing the building renderings as well. And this shows the dewatering building, the grading, so this is the drainage, the site surface drainage is going to, there were a couple of catch bases here, we're replacing and relocating to better intercept the water coming down the hill before it gets to the parking lot and sending it through the existing storm drain system here. Okay. That's codes thing, okay, so this is the proposed headworks building. And if I zoom in a little bit on the floor plan, can explain, this is the existing influence channel that's currently outside and we're constructing a building around it to put in a new mechanical bar screen to remove rags and stringy material from the wastewater before it goes to the treatment process. And then it's, it gets the, the watering compacted and put into a container here that'll be, that'll be removed. So, that shows this building and down here shows the elevations of that building, what it's going to look like. The, the, both of the proposed buildings are going to be brick facade to match the existing buildings on the site with red brick, and then there's a lighter band of a yellowish slash white brick that we're going to match with the new buildings. So, this shows those the renderings of each, each side of that building. This is the new sludge dewatering building, this is the floor plan. It contains the new laboratory for the, for the site. The existing laboratory is in the control building up at the top of the site and that area is going to be refurbished into all office space for the staff. And so, the new laboratory, an expanded laboratory with a little more space is being provided as part of this building, as well as the sludge dewatering equipment, a conveyor, and then there'll be a sludge container here that's, that collects the dewatered sludge so it can be trucked off, so. And here are the elevations of that drawing, so this is, this is the side that'll be facing the river for access for trucks for the container bay. There's also an odor control system on here that will draw air from the dewatering equipment and the sludge container bay to provide odor control on that before it's discharged into the atmosphere. And again, this is the same type of construction to match the existing buildings on site, brick facade with the lighter color band around it, and this shows all the elevations. And I believe that is all of the drawings that were included in the application. And I don't know, Dave, I don't know if Dave's back with us, if he wanted to add anything, but.
Dave, are you with us?
He's talking, but we can't hear.
I sent Dave the phone numbers, he may try calling in, but.
He's on his phone, but it's not, it doesn't seem to be working either.
Yeah, it's still muted.
Is he muted?
Yeah.
Looks like he's, looks like he's.
It's not me. I mean, that's it. Dave, it says he's unmuted.
Kevin, can I ask you just to highlight for me where the, you said, I think there is some additional new driveway?
Yes, let me go back to that drawing, you still seeing my screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. The only new pavement, we're replacing all the existing pavement, as you can see from the original aerial photo, it was a pretty rough shape. So, the only new portion is, is right here, this area right here, to provide access to the new headworks building.
Okay.
The rest of it's, we're replacing it in the existing location. And the different hat, this hatch mark indicates it's a heavy duty pavement, we're using thicker pavement because of the large trucks that drive down to the back of the site for the sludge and, and hypo sodium hypochlorite deliveries in the control building, and then this is just lighter duty pavement up here, just for the staff vehicles, mostly.
That was my only question.
Okay. We, are we calling that good for the presentation? The, the only thing I could suggest, Dave, is just checking if the volume's turned way down on your computer. That's, that's made me be silent before, when things weren't on mute, that might be worth checking. Jeremy?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what to say to Dave, I mean, I, I guess it's, I mean, I wish I had a third phone or second phone, Jeff Senders, you got two phones.
You only do have two phones?
I'm not sure it'll work, I was thinking trying to call Dave Bolstridge and using a speaker to do it, but the delays be too odd, I think.
It's on your phone.
Not gonna work.
That has worked in the past and.
I think it did work one time, didn't it?
Yes. As long as that person who calls in is not also watching the YouTube channel in the background.
Alright, Dave Bolstridge. Wonder how to get his phone number?
I have it.
You do? Yeah, I mean, I guess we can hold off for a second, Rosie, and see if we can get him back on, just to share as an applicant his perspective, and then we can go into, you guys can ask a few questions, but then we ought to go into public comment too.
Are you ready?
The public hearing. I'm, I'm ready, yeah.
Five, four, two.
Hold on, five, four, two?
Eight, nine, two, two. There you go, Dave, the whole world has it now.
Alright, let me try this here. Thanks for everyone's patience. Hey, Dave. Okay, so we're going to try this on my phone, I'm going to put you on speakerphone up by my, my, my thing, but I need you to not have your volume up on your YouTube channel. If you're watching on YouTube. Okay.
And he should probably turn it off on his computer too, and just listen through your.
Can you turn it off on your computer too? Just muted it, okay, let's try this, I'm going to try this here. So, Allison, I, I'm going to struggle monitoring public comment on YouTube while I'm trying to do this.
I can, I can do that.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Dave, we're going to give this a whirl. Dave, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
People hear Dave?
Yep.
Very good, sorry about this, I've been on Zoom quite a few times at at my house through the pandemic here and, and was always able to get audio, so who knows what happened tonight, so. What I was going to say originally was that, you know, there has been just an overview of what we've done at the treatment plant. There's been some upgrades over the years. And typically, when you build a treatment plant, you're looking to start doing upgrades within 20 to 25 years after you've, after it's built. And that's usually the the assumed cycle for, for upgrades. There have been some upgrades, starting in 1985 and as late as 2007. What we're trying to do now is to bring up the rest of the equipment to today's standards that hasn't, that hadn't been upgraded, so. Fortunately, I'd heard what Kevin was going to present before because I didn't hear much of it this time because I was trying to get in, get in on the conversation, so I don't know, I'll open it up if anybody has any questions for me.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, Dave.
Rosie, I think now's the, now's the probably the time to open up to public comment, open the public hearing for public comment.
Okay, that sounds great, we don't need a motion to do that, do we?
No.
Okay, so I'm opening up the meeting for public, public comment. Is there anybody here who has comments?
Before I do that, Dave, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get off with you for a moment, cause, so I can access my phone, okay? I'll call you, I'll call you back when I need you. Or they need you, hold on. I wanted to share a, an email that we got just for public notice, we did send notice out to all the butters. We also sent notice out to the butters across McGunt, across the river. We felt that that was appropriate. We did get a comment, one email. Well, now someone's trying to call me, looks like Dave. Hold on. We did get one email from a gentleman and his wife that own a piece of property on, on Mechanic Street. By email, I shared this with everybody already, so you have it. But entering it into the public record, which we will. Mr. Martin, my wife and I own land identified in the subject application as a butter 120 slash 50. So, that's map 120 lot 50 on Mechanic Street side of the McGunt cook river. We submit the following comment on the application. One, Part 2, Section 3, One, Section 4, Supplemental Information 5, and Section 6, Approval Criteria 1, State that no hold on here, trees will be planted as a part of this renovation. The existing cement wall between the control building and the aerated grit tank presents a significant eyesore to the properties across the river from the wastewater treatment plant, and the plan should include the addition of a row of trees between that cement wall and the river to create an unbroken visual screen from the, that imposing structure. Visual impact of that structure is significant from the Mechanic Street side of the river and should be abated. I would be, it would be optimum if the visual screenings, screen planting spanned the area from just east of the control building to the current sludge tank. Please acknowledge receipt of this comment by email. Respectfully submitted, James and Annie Connell. Again, they have a lot there, they do not live there, but they have a lot there. Want to enter that into the record. So, they do have standing, they got public notice, I think we ought to probably maybe make a motion to accept that one into the record, Rosie.
Okay. Okay, so I make.
And remember to do a roll call vote, call on each member at a time.
Okay, so I make a motion to accept the public comments into the record, do I have a second?
Second, Rosie.
I have a second from Jeff, I'm seeing. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a roll call vote to accept that. Jeff, do I have a yay? I'm scrolling down here, guys, bear with me. Ethan?
Aye.
Aye, alright. Where's Matt, I can't see him. There, Matt, we have an eye, okay, and me, okay, so four eyes, four zero, that's accepted unanimously. Do we?
Alright, and now, there are some, I think some other public comment, folks that are on, on here on Zoom. Other than that, we received no other comment. Again, notice went out and with appropriate timing and dates. We haven't received no other comments other than the email, and there's been no phone calls into our office either, just sharing that with you. Why don't we go with Mr. Jeff Scott? Going to add to you.
So. My name is Jeff Scott, and one of my roles in town is to act as the chairperson for the Camden Rockport Pathways Committee. I have two things that I'd like to share, very brief, less than a minute. First, the pathways committee would like to applaud the applicant and the engineers for engaging pathways in the process. And by so doing, continuing to keep pedestrian and bicycle access in our town as a front burner consideration. It just means that they're talking to us and saying, what issues are here? So, there is no formal requirement for this during the planning approval process. But it's consistent with what the master plan talks about and what the select board would desire, more consideration for bike and pedestrian access. The context in this case has to do with consideration of extension of the Riverwalk across this property. And so, what the applicant was open to and discussed with the committee was how to avoid creating barriers to the future Riverwalk. It's nothing now, but the idea is to do that, and, and there were a lot of, not a lot, but a few significant adjustments that they made, which was absolutely wonderful. And they're also considering improving future pedestrian access by adjusting where current, where current fences are placed to make the grounds more open, which is great, and so we wanted to say thank you for that, great role modeling. And second, we, we want to encourage the planning board to do the same when appropriate for future applicants and to keep bicycle, bike, ped, hats on while considering future construction projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey, yes, and I'm, I'm all for considering bikes and pedestrians at every opportunity. Do we, do we have any other public comments? Here? Allison, do you want to speak?
I would love to, thank you. So, I am speaking in, sort of in two capacities tonight. First is just an interested citizen. And the second is also as a representative for my father, who is the current owner of the property at One Herrick Road, which is directly across the river from the wastewater treatment plant, and also right behind my house on Mechanic Street. So, he has owned that property for about the past two months or so, and we've had a lot of opportunity to watch the significant wildlife that is present in that area. Deer, fishers, raccoons, foxes, otters, beaver, all kinds of things, and one thing that. raccoons, foxes, otters, beaver, all kinds of things. And one thing that we're certainly very glad not to see in the plans for the upgrade would be any increase in the amount of fencing. Currently, there is a fence that goes around the sort of the land portion of the wastewater treatment plant, but there's no fence that keeps, presents a barrier from accessing the property via the river. And I think that's something that's, that's really important to maintain forever. As, as more people start to use the river, the interest in getting over to the treatment plant might increase. I know there've been a couple instances of people kind of walking through there since they've accessed it through the river. But very glad to see that the fence isn't going to be expanded, but in a similar way, as, as Jeff is saying, as a representative of the pathways committee, the current fence does represent a significant obstacle, not only for people, but also for wildlife. And it's one of these fences that goes right down, sort of right into the riparian zone, right, you know, below the, the high water mark. And so I think that it's good for the planning board to know that, you know, that it is currently its town owned property that's presenting a barrier to the Riverwalk. Right now, if you walk past the section of the Riverwalk behind the Lions Club and the skate park, you get to this dead end. And I get questions about it all the time. And it's, you know, it's this, it's this big fence that even has, I think it even has some barbed wire on the, on the top. And so it's, if you think about the Riverwalk maybe a little bit as in the butter to the project, sort of expand our notion of a butters a little bit, and that the Riverwalk is sort of the property of all of the town of Camden. It's unfortunate that so much of this property has been excluded from public access for so long, given that the, the dangerous aspects of the property are really contained within a very small footprint. You've got the clarifiers that you don't want people to be jumping into and a few other things. So that would be the, the main concern is sort of to ask the planning board to, you know, encourage maybe additional public access and to keep that in mind for future projects. And then also, the other concern that I would have and that my dad asked me to relay is the emphasis on really excellent erosion control practices during the construction process. So there, there will be some fairly significant soil disturbance during this time. And, you know, of course, it's all specked out in the, in, in the application, just like it was for the middle school, for instance, that, you know, all best practices will be adhered to and blah, blah, blah. But what we saw with the middle school is that all, despite the, you know, the best laid plans, there was a, there was a really big crisis there in terms of erosion control. And so I would encourage the board to kind of nail down who is ultimately responsible for making sure that best practices are adhered to, that all of the erosion control fencing is in place prior to the project starting. And that basically just maybe dig into that a tiny bit more. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Allison. Do we have anybody else from the public who wants to speak?
I don't believe so, Rosie.
Okay.
I think we're and there's no other comments that I can see on YouTube. So I think we should close the public hearing and then open it up to discussion. And maybe I can say a couple of things to address a couple of the comments that were made.
Okay, okay. Do we need a motion?
I think, I think that'll help you informing how you move forward.
Okay, do we need to make a motion to close the hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so I make a motion to close the public part of this hearing. Do I have a second? Oh, Jeff Senders. So it's, okay, so Jeff Senders, do I have an eye? Yes. Matt Siegel, do I have an eye? Yes. Ethan, do I have an eye?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Rosie Curtis, I. Okay, so that's four zero. So the next part of the hearing is the opportunity for members of the board to ask any questions. They may happen to discuss the project. Is there, are there any board members that would like to speak to this? Jeff?
Yeah, I'd like to speak. So I looked over the vegetation request. And with the pathway that we're hoping to get kind of a property, it would be difficult to plant trees or anything to buffer that concrete wall. And also, if we paint the concrete wall, the paint is just gonna peel. And I understand it's visualized, so we see it, I can see it from Mechanic Street. But I don't know how we could screen that wall effectively without planting trees to the south of the concrete or the asphalt down the hill that might inhibit future access to the public to that parcel with the pathway.
Hey, Jeff, this is Ethan. This, this is Ethan. What about, what about Ivy or something like that?
To grow down the wall. That was my thought too, maybe. Because there's pavement right up to the base of it. But maybe something could grow down it, and that might be the workaround. That's a good point.
Okay, I've got, I've got Jeremy's got something to say. Sorry, Jeremy, we started discussing before you.
One thing first, for Kevin, can you stop sharing your screen for now? Just a couple of comments about that. So I had reviewed this, obviously, this concern came in, this comment came in. Steve and I reviewed, when we review these site plans, we review before you guys get them, we're, I'm looking at them, Steve's looking at them because we have, you know, the shoreline zoning, there's all that stuff. There's the buffer requirements, there's lot coverage, there's setbacks and all that stuff. So when we determine the application complete and in conformance with the plan, we move it forward to you guys. In the section of the ordinance that the gentleman's referring to, talks about the use. And so in essence, we have the use already established. I mean, we can't go back, we can't, it's, it's very difficult. I just, I'm just trying to point this out because it applies to everyone's property, you know, much like a house that doesn't need a setback. Well, it was built when there wasn't setback requirements and buffer requirements and all those kinds of things. So we can't go back to an applicant or a property owner and say, you must now comply with a standard when you're used to been there for, you know, decades. So we looked at this and if we do apply the buffer standards, I'm just throwing this out there, it talked, the buffer standards are about over 100 feet, right? You have to plant X number of trees. And those kind of thing, overstory trees, understory trees and shrubs per 100 feet. The area that's new on this project, even though the use is currently still there, right? We're talking about the head, headworks building that is over top of the existing headworks infrastructure that's underground, right? The use is still there. It's already there. We're just putting a building on top of it. The sledge tank, right, it is a sledge tank. That's going away and we're getting a brand new brick building, facade building. So that in essence is going away. The, and if you look at that section it refers to in the approval criteria, we're also removing, the plan is to remove the monorail system and that other big, you know, steel structure. That's all coming down. It's going to be a very different visual, visually than it is today. But if you try to buffer that new building that's like 24 feet wide, you're talking about one tree and four shrubs, I believe, and one overstory, under canopy tree, one understory tree and four shrubs. And so you know, it's possible, Dave and I have talked about how we're going to try to get to that place. I mean, you also need to think of it in the context of like our, our cell tower ordinance, most cell tower ordinances have buffer standards that you need to buffer the site from the development. Well, you know, and what they do is they put trees around the fenced in area. Now, they don't buffer the use, you know, like the cell tower. We have that in our ordinance too. So it's just, it's about softening. If you look at the standard, I just wanted to point that out, and I think the whole thing changes. And you guys can deliberate over that. The comment about the trail and pedestrian access is a very good point. I talked about it with Jeff today, Jeff Scott. Our ordinance doesn't, in the approval criteria, give you that as a standard. I do feel as the planning development director for the town and you know, along with Jeff, that and everyone else, I think in town really, that pedestrian access and safety and bicycles are significantly important. We need, we need to do it better and provide for that connectivity. So I'm going to work on, just work on looking at as an approval criteria for a potential zoning amendment because I think it's important. I just wanted to address that. And the Riverwalk issue, we've been working on it a long time. Likely what you'll see in the future too is me requesting the town rezone the portion of the property that is village to B1. It makes a lot of sense. It facilitates the Riverwalk. It's, you know, commercial industrial part of town, and that's what shoreline zoning provides for that kind of stuff. So I just want to share that with you. So we will be able to hopefully forward with a Riverwalk trail in that area as we go. And just to throw this out there, remember, we did this minor revision piece that we can then come back after this project gets approved. And someone wants to put the trail in or tweak where fences are now on this plan. It's a town project. We have control what happens there. So we can then, you know, revise this plan moving forward and not make a really big deal about it, but provide public access to the site much more than it is currently, and we'll stay consistent with approved plan because we'll be able to approve that either through a minor revision or by staff. Okay, my, those are my comments for now.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Oh, so one other thing, one other thing, one other thing I think is a great idea, and we had chatted today about it, is a mural on that concrete wall.
I just heard that. That's awesome.
I think that's a great thing that we can work, work on doing. And it can also be a public education thing on what, what does a wastewater treatment plant do? And that would be really cool.
Good. I like it.
So throwing that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Ethan, did you have a comment?
Well, that kind of usurped the comment. I was, I was gonna go back to the wall. It sounded like to me that Jeremy, you were sort of saying that the wall was not really within the purview of this application. But then, but then you brought up the, the mural. So I'm just, I'm just curious to the extent where you feel like we can and should address it. Because the comment, the comment came in on that, that one thing. And I think anybody who's driven down onto Mechanic Street knows that it's not the, the best looking site right now. It sounds like it's going to improve by tearing down that tank. But I am sensitive to the comments that, that the wall itself isn't all that attractive. And so I think it's a great idea to consider options. I just heard about the mural now for the first time. I also think, you know, Ivy would be a good way as well. But I, you know, I just don't know if we're supposed to address or allowed to address that in this, in this proceeding.
Um, yeah, I, I don't think you can deny this type of project for, because of that reason. That said, this is a town. I think the wastewater superintendent, the town manager, myself, the select board is on board with public access and trying to soften, you know, the look of our buildings and make them fit in. I mean, this is a neighborhood too, and it's got to work. It's got to fit in. Remember, and I mean, I mentioned it, that monorail, when you drive past that, you're right. You know, you look at that. And Mr. O'Connell, the gentleman who commented, his lot is the one that is not built on, but has no, not a lot of trees, right? It's the lawn that you, that opens up to see the facility. Most of the folks that are on Mechanic Street, there's a buffer of some sort, elevations change and all. So you can look across and see the school, of course. And you can look across and see probably the bus barn and all that stuff and the Osprey Nest up in that CMP, you know, there's another CMP, you know, infrastructure over there too. But we have the ability to do this on our own and we're going to, you know, you don't have, again, I don't, don't think you can deny this project because of it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anybody was talking about denying, but, but I mean, what we typically would do in this situation is put it in as a condition or a suggestion. And so I mean, you know, the suggestion obviously doesn't carry any particular teeth, but it's.
I would say why not like make a recommendation is a great, is a great way. And I think Dave understands. I mean, it's his building. I like the idea of Ivy, and that was, I think, one of my first thoughts. But at the same time, that's a wall that is holding up, and I'll let Kevin Obrey talk to probably, but that's a wall, retaining wall, that's whole, we've got infrastructure behind that wall, right? So we don't want to undermine that wall. So if we've got Ivy growing up in it, Ivy grows into concrete. I'm not sure that's the best scenario. So I think a mural is a much, much better idea and way of softening what that look is gonna, what it's gonna appear like. And remember, all of that, you know, that tank's going away and all that steel infrastructure is going away. So if you just take that stuff off, it's going to soften the, the site quite a bit. And it's gonna, they're gonna be brick veneered buildings. You know, they're gonna, they're gonna, I think, blend in much, much better than what you have. But that's, you guys, this is your stuff.
Jeremy, can you hear me now or?
I can, Dave. Yep.
There, yeah, there we go. So I'm available now, finally. Yeah, I agree with the, if you don't mind me interjecting right here, I agree with the, the Ivy. Because plants will hold, hold in moisture and, and, you know, concrete walls will decay quicker when that moisture is being held in. I, I see that all the time with the dams. But the mural, I, I had thought about that myself. That might be a good, good way to soften that wall. I looked at the trees as well, Jeff. The only place I could see to put them to potentially not impact the trail would be right at the bottom of the slope. The issue is right there where you're into cattails. And I think that's why trees haven't grown there yet. You look at further down the river, or further up the river, I should say, there, there's all kinds of trees, they, the mature trees, they, they make a great buffer. But you know, there, there isn't anything other than cattails and other smaller vegetation that can, can stay in that wet area.
Type of wetland it is right there.
Yeah, it is.
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
I would just suggest, once you get to, I know we may be a little bit far from there, but that first one is about how it, you know, that softening. So I would just talk about these things in that motion from that context.
Okay, thank you.
And then Jeremy, to address Allison's comment about who is the steward of the erosion control? Is that?
Oh, right.
Does that fall to you or is that Dave's job?
Well, I, I guess I'll comment really quick. I guess I'll comment really quick, Dave. We are in the shoreline zone, and I know this, you know, most contractors have certified people that work in the shoreline zone, and they don't all get it right. I mean, the contract up at the middle school, that was a shoreline zone certified contractor too, and they had trouble. For sure, there's no question. We will, I mean, I'm, it's, it's different than the middle school when you look at the size of the, the area that's going to be opened up at one point at one time. But we are going to man, I mean, they have to be certified. The contractor will ultimately be responsible. Dave and Kevin, you can chime in on this. I mean, they have a contract they're going to be signing. They have to comply with the specs and the documents and make sure everything is in line. And who's going to hold them to that? I mean, I will be there, Steve will be there, and I think Dave Bolshardt will be there. Dave St. Laurent will be there. I mean, it's a town project. We cannot have this go bad. It's, it's a, you know, it, I think it's everyone's responsibility, but ultimately the contractor is, is the one that should be held responsible for it. And I believe that's how most of these contracts are specked out.
Right. Well, I mean, I, I accepted that the contractor would be the one that's responsible, but we can't always rely on them to self-report. And I'm not, I'm not making any particular comments about that. It's just, again, there should be somebody who I think is our point person. I mean, whether it's, you know, you or Dave or.
I'll be the point person probably on the enforcement end, and I'll be working with Dave, you know, I mean, to make sure he's got it right. I mean, Dave's, it's, he's kind to make sure he's got it right. I mean, Dave's, it's, he's kind of the super, I kind of think of this, like he's the ultimate. It's his project, right? But I have a role under the erosion control requirements of the town to make sure that those are managed and those are appropriately handled.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be watching that closely. And Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, you looked at it a little more than I did. I think part of the problem with the school project were those big mounds of clay that were sitting on site. And initially they didn't have berms around them and, uh, you know, it just a recipe for disaster, I think. But you, you agree with that, Jeremy? Yeah?
It was a recipe for disaster, no question. I mean, they opened up, I think, six acres at one time. I mean, when you open up six acres at one time of clay soil, it's your, you, you, it's going to fail. And there, at times there was nothing to fail, but yes, I will say we will not issue any permits. I mean, the first permit will, erosion control will be installed before they move soil on that property.
Great. And can I get a confirmation from our resident soil expert, erosion expert Jeff, that he's looked this over and he thinks it's all up to snuff?
I'm going to ask Allison.
Okay, monitoring closely from across the river. Don't worry, I'll be the reporting person over the weekend if nobody's there.
All right, notice is given. Do, do we have any other questions from planning board members? Jeff? No. Okay. Matt, do you have any questions? Good?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I also just say one thing? Because Mark Segenthaler was supposed to be here, right? And he called me today. He couldn't be here. But he did chat with me about the project and he, we talked about the similar stuff. I mentioned the mural to him. That was a great idea. You know, he, we talked about Ivy and trees and the issue with planting things on the wall and elevation changes and buffers and about the use already being there. And he understood. And he did comment that with the tank going away, the steel tank going away and that, that steel superstructure stuff going away, it's going to soften the site quite a bit by itself. So I just want to share that. That was Mark's comment.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so I guess at this point, if we have no more comments or questions from the planning board, we need to open the hearing backups for any further comments from members of the public. Do I need a motion to do that? Can I just do it?
Why don't you just do a quick motion?
Okay, I make a motion to open the public part of this planning board. I've got a second from Jeff. Okay, Jeff, do I have an eye?
Eye.
Eye, okay. Uh, where are we going? Do I have Matt Siegel? I have an eye. Ethan, we have an eye. Eye. Okay, so I have an eye. So there we go, four zero. So the public portion of this hearing is open again. Are there any further comments from members of the public or questions?
None that I see anywhere. No.
No.
And maybe Allison, is the lag on YouTube like a minute?
Uh, no, it's like 20 seconds.
Okay, before I, I want to.
Right, that's, that's.
I mean, I think Rosie.
It's been 20 seconds. Okay. Okay, in that case, we'll close this part of the hearing and I have to ask if any members of the board have any final questions for the applicant. I'm seeing a no from Jeff and no from Matt. A no from Ethan. I'm satisfied. Okay, so at that point, we can proceed with our deliberations and make sure that the applicant has met all the relevant criteria and approval criteria. Is that right, Jeremy?
Yes, ma'am.
That's the next job. All right, gentlemen.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys, you can chat amongst yourselves and ask any more questions of the applicant and then, and then be done with that. It sounds like you're done with that. So just chat. And then if you've, you don't have any more deliberation, you can get right into the approval criteria.
We need to sign off on these one at a time.
You do.
Don't we? So kind of if, if the other planning board members are ready, let's go for it. Yeah?
Yeah.
Should I, should I read them out, Jeremy? How much do I need to?
Um, I mean, I think everyone has their ordinance. It's, it's available. Could do. You don't, I don't think you need to read through every one of them, but to make sure you're referencing the section and, and then somehow how you determine that it meets that standard.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so section six of, of, what's that called? Section 12?
12.
Article 12. Number one requires the applicants to preserve and enhance the landscape. Does the board feel that this has been done?
Yes.
In what way? Please expand upon that somehow.
They, it's minimal impact for the proposed necessary use in that they are reusing the existing footprints of existing structures and rebuilding in those existing footprints versus expanding the existing infrastructure. So they're taking the storage tank down and putting the building there. And so they're reusing the existing layout as best as they can to rebuild the plant. So to me, that is making the best use of the site without compromising it or growing.
And maybe this is where you would maybe someone include a recommendation that they work on a mural of some sort to soften the wall.
Yeah, are we doing a motion there, Jeff?
Um, Ethan, you want to make a motion?
Recommendation.
I'm just saying, why?
That's your comment. I mean, your thought, Jeff, is that they, they meet the requirements adequately.
Yeah, yeah.
With nothing extra needed.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm ready. I'm ready to make a motion if you guys, if you all are ready.
Matt Siegel, just hold, hold your horses a second. Matt, are you good with moving forward on a motion?
Moving forward based on what Jeff has described in terms of the removal of the tank.
So you're, you're satisfied with it? Yes. Okay, okay, great, Ethan. You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll give it a shot. Um, for Article 12, Section 6, number one, preserve and enhance the landscape. I would move that the applicant has demonstrated via the site plan application that they're going to do minimal disturbance of existing vegetation and landscape and actually improve and enhance by removal of the existing structures and replacing with the structures more in line with the other buildings on the site. And with a recommendation from the planning board that the applicant consider putting a mural or some other sort of screening for the, for the cement wall.
Ethan, just really quick, if I can try to maybe add, have you add something to that just for comment? We talked about reducing fence areas too, and that may enhance some of this as well. So maybe along the lines of.
Yeah, another recommendation that the applicant consider removal of fence for both wildlife and for pedestrian and, and other access. You know, consistent with the town plan.
I second that.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got a second from Jeff. Matt Siegel, do we have an? Are you ready to sign off on this one? Yes, we have an eye from Matt Siegel. I'll sign off on it. So that, that's for, for yes, four zero for number one. Number two, erosion control. Does planning board feel that the applicants met the requirements for erosion control? Jeff?
Yes, yes, I do. And shown on sheet, I think whatever sheet that was, their, their erosion control measures and their details and everything's in shoreline. They're going to have contracted shoreline certified. And we just said that Jeremy and Dave are going to be on point with the contractor, should anything go awry, because we know something might. So yeah, I feel like, I feel like they've covered their bases.
I agree.
Again, but the important caveat that there is someone overseeing this, namely Jeremy and Dave.
Yes.
Yes, fantastic. Somebody wants to make a motion to accept that.
It has fulfilled the erosion control, section six, number two, per our ordinance.
Are we good with that, planning board?
I think it needs to have a little more in it. So for the section six criteria, two erosion control, I moved it with the, we find that the applicant has demonstrated sufficient erosion control based on the site plan application and the hiring of shoreline certified contractors with the condition that, well, not condition, but the, well, yeah, the condition that Jeremy will oversee sort of oversee the, the, that, that portion in concert with Dave.
Okay, my, my only hesitation about kind of specifically saying Jeremy's going to oversee it is he does this as a part of his job. He's already doing it. So I'm.
Development direct, the planning and development director? Is that a better?
But that's what he does. I mean, that's a standard part of his job description. So I'm not sure why we're adding that in. I, I understand the hesitation that people have given what happened with the middle school, but you know, is it really good practice? Is it really good legal practice to be saying that people must make sure they do their job that is standard part of what they do?
I think with Jeremy, it's always good practice to make sure he's doing his job.
How about with the understanding instead of with the condition? Say with the understanding.
I like that, Jean.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm happy to amend my motions from with the condition to the understanding and thank you.
I second that.
Okay, great. Matt, do we have your approval? Matt Siegel?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. You know, here we go. Yes.
And I'll sign off on understanding too. That's great. So four zero, we accept number two.
Jeremy, understand the understanding.
Understood.
All right. Number three, relationship of the proposed buildings to the environment and neighboring buildings. Do any members of the planning board wish to speak to this specifically?
And again, I think it harkens to Jeff's note about taking down the existing steel structures, that it will be beneficial to both in terms of the community and also in terms of, as Dave and Kevin mentioned, in terms of the efficiency of the operation. So it seems like a win-win.
Yes, I agree. And that and the, the fact that the new building is consistent with the existing buildings on site, the, the brick facade.
Yeah, I have to say, I love the, that just is beautiful, really simple utilitarian square boxes. They're not trying to be anything other than what they are. I just think they're quite beautiful in their simplicity and engineering likeness. Yeah, I'm happy with, I'm happy with all of that. And I'd agree with the comments from the other gentleman. Okay, so Matt Siegel, do you want to make a motion?
I would make a motion that the relationship with the proposed building to the environment and neighboring buildings has been reviewed by the planning board and based on our observations and based on the submission that we should approve article, section six, article three.
Thank you. Jeff Senders, do we have your approval? Yes. Ethan, do we have your approval? Eye, okay. It's a yes from me. So, and Matt's obviously a yes. So that's four zero. So number four, vehicular access, parking and circulation. Do any members of the planning board have comments about this?
No real changes, just the more access to the, what was it, the grit area? So to me, there's no real significant changes.
And I would comment, Jeff, but there actually is apparently an engineering change to, to the new asphalt construction in terms of weight bearing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But that to me is not anything the planning board has any say on.
Right, it's not in our purview.
Yeah, because it's the mix of the asphalt, it's the thickness of the asphalt. It doesn't change the width and impervious surface. And they're not really changing the amount of impervious surface. So to me, it's not something. I mean, it is a no, obviously. It's going to be a lot better. It's going to last longer. But it's not increasing the runoff. It's not degrading the environment anymore.
And those are, Jeff, to your point, those were my initial concerns and reviews that when they were going to lay down this new material, that it was going to change the runoff and the erosion, but apparently.
Yeah, no.
Not from the engineering.
I would also add that the fire chief has reviewed the plans, has no issues. And I just bring that up because of that is, you know, vehicular access and circulation. It's very important in the fire department. And Dave St. Laurent, the public works director, had no issues either.
Just, can I ask an offhand question? How many cars are often parked out there? I just, I think it's kind of an offhand question for either Kevin or maybe Dave.
I think, I think like four.
We're parked in the lower parking lot or the upper?
On site.
Yeah, on site. I guess we combine the two just as a general.
Yeah, on site. There's six of us. So during the day, there's six cars that arrive and of course, we have a couple of pickups. We've got a jetter, but the, the jetter usually stays in the garage unless it's out in town cleaning pipe. So you're, you're looking at probably right around eight cars typically, unless we have a visitor.
Thank you.
There'll be nine there when I'm over there every day looking at erosion control.
That's right. You gotta, you're gonna do that, you gotta bring the coffee.
There's an understanding you will bring the coffee, Jeremy.
Understand that.
Rosie, keep them in line. We're approaching 10 o'clock.
Yes, let's keep moving. All right. So you can make the next motion, Matt. Go for it.
No, I'm good. I'm good.
I move that there's no significant change to vehicle access, parking and circulation, and it meets our ordinance.
Okay. Okay, Ethan's a yes. Matt, do we have a yes? Yes, Matt's a yes. Rosie's a yes. Okay, Jeff's a yes. So four zero. Okeydoke, surface water drainage. Does the planning board feel like the applicants have met the requirements for surface water drainage? Anyone? Jeff, you're the expert on this.
And, and once again, there's no real significant proposals to the drainage, grading or impervious surface. They are improving some catch basins, which should help the drainage on site. There is no stormwater treatment. And that should be known. I don't see any really BMPs proposed to treat the stormwater that's being run off of the site. So maybe someday in the future, maybe 25 years from now, when we revisit the plan again in the future, we would install some kind of stormwater treatment system. So we're not just running that impervious surface into the river. But for now, I feel like the surface water drainage is not changing significantly. It've actually minimized their impacts as best as possible, utilizing existing footprints, as we already said. So they have met our ordinance. I feel like number five, section six, section.
Thank you.
I do have a question, not that it's in our purview, Jeff, but is this facility going to be impacted in any way by the middle school's drainage and runoff? Do we know this? No?
It shouldn't.
I will say the, yeah, the stormwater that comes off of the school property does not get to this site. It heads further up, up river from here. There's two large drain pipes coming from the site up, up river.
All right. So there's a basically a cutoff before it's coming down this way.
Yes.
Except those few times when it did.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Six acres of clay.
Yes, no, no clay piles on this one. Okay. Ethan, are you satisfied? Do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, lovely. Jeff, do you want to make the motion? Given this is.
I, I move that section six, number five, surface water drainage is not significantly changing as proposed. And so they have met our ordinance.
Thank you. Remember, Jeremy, did you have a comment?
Well, I just want to remind everyone that. Well, I just want to remind everyone that the applicant, part of the submittal, submittal application included their review of the approval criteria and how they felt they met them. So it may help you with your review, just throwing that out there, reminding you of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions or comments from the planning board? Are we ready to make a motion then?
Do we just make a motion?
Are we, are we all good? And everybody signed off on it? Did we get everybody signed off?
You need a second. You need a second.
I need a second minimum.
Second.
Matt's second.
We're in.
Okay, so Jeff, are you in approval of this? Yes, Jeff is in approval. Matt Siegel in approval? Great, yes. And Ethan, are you in approval?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Rose and Rosie's a yes. So that's four zero. The next one is public utilities. Does anybody need to speak up to this on the planning board? Have they met the requirements?
It seems, and there's a comments that they actually in fact will be upgrading the facility as well as installing the generator, which I thought was a huge improvement to this facility.
Okay, yep. Ethan, Jeff, do you have anything to say?
No, no impacts to public utilities.
What's that?
No real impacts to the public utilities.
Right, it, it is a
How about a big positive impact to the
Yeah.
Rewiring.
New sewer.
Public utilities, we're reviewing our impacts on the surrounding public utilities, not what we're doing on the site. And so that's kind of how I'm looking at it. What we're doing on the site is not going to impact the public utilities surrounding the people and getting their public
Perfect.
Yes. Do you want, okay, do you want to make a motion to?
I move that section six, number six, public utilities is not adversely impacted by the proposed activities.
Okay. Ethan?
Second.
Second, okay. So do we have Matt Siegel, are you in favor?
I'm in favor. It is not adversely impacted and they actually improved.
Okay, fantastic. So that's a yes from Matt. Ethan? Are you in approval? Aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Jeff is a yes. I'm a yes. That's four zero. For public utilities, number seven, special features of development.
Rosie, can I read something on this one? Just because this is an odd one?
Yeah, go for it.
From the approval criteria, it says special features of development, exposed storage areas, exposed machinery installation, service areas, truck loading areas, utility buildings, and similar structures shall have setbacks and screening to provide a buffer to sight and sound sufficient to minimize their adverse impact on other land uses within the development area and on surrounding properties. The applicant part of this in his section and what he submitted included, right, there's a new proposal for a new emergency generator. So that's what he included in this section. I think that's probably a special feature. If you, you know, under that machinery installation areas, and I just would, and it does talk about sight and sound. And I just wanted to just briefly bring this up because I know emergency generators go through testing procedures at certain times. And I just, maybe you ought to think about or make sure somehow that we work with Dave Bolsters at wastewater to time those appropriately. So they're not, I don't know how loud they're going to be, but you know, that
Jeremy, Jeremy, to your point, there's the, what I, because this was a red flag in my initial notes, but the sound attenuation enclosure to reduce noise while operating.
I understand.
And I didn't see that on the plan though. Is it a wall? Is it a, what are they building around this thing?
Good question.
I might be able to answer that. The enclosure around the generator. It's, it's a weather tight enclosure, but it also has sound attenuation within the enclosure. So it's not external to the well, it's external to the working part of the generator, but it's not a sep, it's not separate from the generator itself.
Okay, so it's a, it's an insulated generator in terms of the unit, in terms of the generator.
Yes, yes. Yeah, there's an enclosure around it to, to attenuate the sound.
Okay, and not again, not a secondary structure that's being built around that.
That's, that's correct.
If I could, just one second. We put a new generator at C Street Pump Station, backup generator. Now it's, it's a smaller generator, but about two or three o'clock in the morning, we lost power. The new generator started up. We happened to, the guys happened to see the neighbor next door, whose house is probably 20, 30 feet from the generator. And he asked if that woke him up when it came on. He said, I didn't even know it was running. The, these generators now, they're night and day compared to, you know, 20 years ago.
Rosie, you're muted, just so you know, Rosie. We'd love to see your lips move, but if you
Yeah, Rosie, you're muted.
We will hear the dulcet tones.
Sorry, the dog was tramping in and out.
Oh, yes. I have one of those too going on here.
Okay, so do the planning board members have any further comments or concerns about this?
No, I mean, it's a necessary feature. They didn't have it and something would go wrong. You know, it is a little bit of noise, but.
Okay, so then would you suggest in a motion that the insulated unit would provide sufficient sound attenuation to minimize an adverse impact?
Oh, but I mean, without decibel readings, it'd be hard to say that it will. I mean, it's really just one of those, this is an existing wastewater treatment plant.
Dave, do you have one there now? You must.
No, we do not. We, yeah, we, so this is a big improvement on treatment. You know, we can, we've got small generators so that we can continue to chlorinate during the summer months. But, you know, you lose your aeration on the aeration tanks. And, you know, so you're, you have your bacteria settling out. Fortunately, it's very rare that we have a power outage. And typically, if we have one, it's very short. So historically, that's why they've been able to get by without a generator. But I think you know, it's, it's time to be able to run that plant regardless of power outage.
Yeah.
I would, is the new middle school, does that have an emergency generator?
I hope so.
Yeah, there's a generator there.
So that's going to be tested once a week or however often it has to be tested, just as this one's being tested, right?
I mean, it only runs, it only runs when it's an emergency.
Yeah. But they have to get tested on
Yeah.
So it's
Yeah, we, we normally do test them. It might, might not be once a month. I mean, once a week, could be once a month. But it, it's good to periodically test them to make sure that a problem hasn't happened with the electronics or some other component of the generator to, to make sure it's still up and running in good shape and ready for a power outage.
Right, but Dave, you would, you would test that during daylight hours when your, when your crews are there.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it would be during the day.
Right. And decibel
We're not going to fire, fire it up at seven o'clock in the morning, you know, when we get there, but we'll, we'll wait until 10, 11 o'clock, something like that, or in the afternoon.
Okay.
I would suggest that maybe you include that in your motion and that that's how they're going to minimize that adverse impact. That they're going to do it during daylight hours when decibel levels are generally higher than the background levels are anyway.
Okay, that makes sense.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah, please, go for it.
I move that section six, number seven, special features of development, and specifically the generator as proposed will be only tested during daylight hours, normal business operation hours. And as such, being an insulated building, they have met our ordinance for special features of development and minimized their impacts on the surrounding environment.
Okay, I'd second that. Sorry, I'm losing my voice here. Okay, so we have a yes from Matt Siegel. Do we have a yes from Ethan? We have a yes from Jeff. Aye. And a yes from me. It's like an option. It's great, isn't it? Four zero. Okay, so that one passed. Number eight, exterior lighting. See, the applicant did give us cut sheets of the light fixtures they're posing on using. Does anybody have any questions about that or comment on the exterior lighting?
Downward facing LEDs.
Okay, Jeff.
Jeremy? I want to point out that I did reach out to the applicant today and he is the fixtures that they've specked out are dark sky compliant fixtures. Just wanted to share that with you.
Yep, terrific. Thanks, Jeremy.
Yep.
Fantastic.
Lighting's your thing, isn't it? So why don't you do this motion?
Cut in there quick. Somebody tagged that. Lighting is not my thing. I don't know how I got that.
Architectural constraint.
Okay. I saw, I make a motion that the, that the applicant has satisfied the requirements for exterior lighting, given that they're going to use dark sky compliant, energy efficient LED fixtures, and they provided us with a cut sheet. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and a third. All right, so, so Jeff, do I have a yes?
Yeah.
From Jeff, I have a yes from Jeff. Matt, I have a yes from Ethan.
Aye.
Aye, and Rosie, aye. So that's four zero. Emergency vehicle access. Is the planning board satisfied that all requirements for emergency vehicle access have been met by the applicants?
In town. Jeremy, did we have some comments on that?
Yeah, the fire chief has, I spoke with him today and he's reviewed the plans and he's okay with the plans.
Right.
Good enough to make.
Yep.
And essentially no changes to the existing layout.
Yeah.
So actually greater access, Ethan, with that pavement going into, in between the buildings.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so I make a motion that we, that the applicant has met the requirements for emergency vehicle access. And as, and is indeed improving the access.
Yep, second.
Okay, second from Jeff. Okay, do I have a yes from Matt Siegel? Yes. Yes, from Ethan.
Aye.
Yes, from Jeff, and I from Ethan, and I from Rosie. That's four zero. Um, 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 special criteria is number 10.
Not applicable.
Not applicable. So I make a motion that number 10 is not applicable. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jeff, a second. Okay, Matt Siegel, yes. Ethan, are you a yes?
Aye.
And I. All right, and I'm an I. I think we got us all. So that's four zero. Number 11, design standards. Does the planning board have any comment about whether the applicant has met the design standards for the district?
This one's vague from the beginning. It's one of those that, well, we kind of recommend it, but we don't really have any teeth in it. And there, this is a, this is a wastewater treatment plant. They're doing building, buildings that are existing, that match existing buildings. So to me, while this project is kind of hard to peg on these design standards, it's not residential, not in the community. Although it's visible from the community. They're satiating it by building buildings that match the buildings that are on site. So, yeah, I think they knew it.
Yep.
Yeah, Matt or Ethan, do you have any comments?
No, and it's also in keeping with the, the tailor building just behind it. So there's a certain motif as an architect or designer that is appealing.
Death.
Well done. Good choice. Glad to see that they're not putting up a 2,500 gallon huge tank. In blue.
You don't like that?
Baby blue. No baby blue.
That's a value judgment.
Yes, it is, because it's almost 10 o'clock.
Ethan, do you have any comments?
No, I agree with fellow members that the the building matches the ones on site. So, yeah.
Now, Jeremy.
I have one. Did you ask, you, you, you all voted yay on that, right?
We haven't voted yet.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking ahead. Sorry.
Good job.
Okay.
You said, don't talk over people.
He's walking time, that's different. Okay, and I agree. I think they've done a, a really sweet, tidy little job with the design of these. And the band's great. Somebody knew what they were doing, which is nice to see. So I would make a motion that the applicants have met the design standards required.
I second that.
You have seconds it. Okay, Matt, do we have an aye?
Yes.
Or yes, yes. Do we have an aye, Ethan?
Aye.
Aye, Jeff? We have a yes. Okay, Rosie, yes, that's four zero. Do we overlay design, are overlay design standards relevant here, Jeremy?
No.
Not applicable.
Do we need to vote that it's not applicable?
Did you do the last? I don't think you did. So, no.
Okay, so
He needs this like, no, guys, move on.
You don't have to vote, it's done.
I'm working on it. Yes, Jeremy.
One last thing before we could probably do a final approval of the whole project. I forgot to, they, they did waiver early on in the submittal requirements, and the waiver was the requirement for a boundary survey of the treatment plant. Site's been there since 1970. The deed for the lot is included. We just didn't get a full survey for that lot. That would be thousands and thousands of dollars, and it's not needed at this, at this. I just wanted to tell you that, and you should probably vote on that there was a waiver. You guys waived that requirement if, if you're okay with it.
Should we make a motion on that?
Please.
I make a motion that the battery survey for those parcels is unnecessary for the proposed development.
I'm second that.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a yes from Jeff? Yes. Yes, from Matt Siegel. Yes, Ethan?
Aye.
Do we have an aye? Aye, Rosie, aye. That's four zero. We accept the waiver.
All right.
So that go on, Jeff.
We need to do it overall, all right, Jeanie?
Yeah, do you want to?
Devote that it's all complete and we voted everything's good.
Yeah, that's next. Go for it, Jeff. You're so good at it.
I make a motion that the application is complete and they fulfill all of the approval criteria for our ordinance.
Do we have a second? Matt Siegel seconds. Okay, so vote from the board. Ethan?
Aye.
Aye, we have a yes from Jeff Senders. Matt Siegel, aye, we have a yes, and Rosie, yes. So four zero, we accept the entire application as complete and approved. Yay, good job, guys. Thank you for sticking with it.
Matt Siegel, are you in my house? Because your upstairs looks just like mine.
And I heard you're going to be cooking dinner, so I can't wait.
No, my wife brought it up to me already and it's been awesome.
All right. Do you have anything else, Jeremy?
No, I will say that there is something in the works. I, I'm surprised we haven't seen it yet. And this is for a pier out on yeah, I don't, I'm just surprised we haven't seen it. It's out in the Outer Harbor. Not even Outer Harbor, it's in the coastal. You know, outside, well outside the harbor. I'm surprised we haven't seen it. That's in the works. I am going to be looking at some zoning ordinance amendments, and we'll, we'll try to get those moving forward. I think the, the this property going to be one from Village, or at least this portion of this property, we should move that forward. I just like to get these done. It takes a long time to get these processed, and we're probably going to be doing Zoom things for a while, so let's just try to get some of these underway and done. One thing I will also be doing is looking at the approval criteria for connectivity, pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. We'll do that as well. I think that's it for you guys for now.
Thank you.
Oh, one final thing. We did, and I, I'm sorry, I mean, it's been so strange with COVID. We did have, I did have a intern working with me this summer. We did have, I did have a intern working with me this summer, albeit remotely. It didn't play out like I think any of us hoped. But what she had drafted, she had looked at our comprehensive plan. I think everyone knows what it is and they've seen it. We just amended it, we just adopted a new comp plan in two thousand seventeen in, in that there is scant mention of climate change and sea level rise. I think if you do a PDF search of that document, I think climate change comes up twice and it's just like one sentence and that's it. So I'm working on a, the new section on climate change and sea level rise. The intern looked at what other communities across the state have done. She had put together a lot of good information. We're kind of, I don't want to recreate the wheel at all. So one thing, the town of York is, has a great comp plan on sea level rise. And I, I'm going to, we're going to try to model some of that, their, their, their comp plan. Pete Slavinsky, who is with the Maine Geological Survey, he's an awesome, awesome client, he's a climate change expert, he's a mapping guy, it's, he's pretty phenomenal. He's offered in the fall to do probably a Zoom meeting with the town and on this specific issue for our comp plan, which I think was going to be really neat. And he, we're going to be able to have, hopefully have maps showing what Army Corps and NOAA's projections are. And he's going to have a real detailed maps. He did it for York. It's a really cool presentation. And I just want to mention that to you. It's something that we really need to work on, especially if we're looking at the McGuntwick River, restoring that, that watershed. A lot of these grants and things that we are applying for, you know, you need to be supported, have town support, and if that stuff is in the comp plan, it, it really goes a long way. So I just want to mention that I'm working on that.
One more thing, everybody will need to stop by the office at your convenience and sign the site plan.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Is there a time limit for us to sign them?
No.
No.
Like the next couple of weeks?
Yeah. Before Christmas.
Oh, don't say that.
You get the rum cake. When, when's the rum cake coming?
Santa may have to bring you rum cake.
Come in for the rum cake.
I'll come back to the state for that.
Next time we're going to see anybody, it's rum cake.
Send like ten site plans.
All right. Kevin, thank you so much. Dave Bolsters, thank you so much.
Thank you all. That was great. Thank you.
Get a motion to end this meeting?
Everyone, that was really awesome. I'm so happy. That was fun to watch.
Thanks, Alison. All right, wonderful. All right, who wants to make a motion to end this meeting?
Ethan does.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Go for it, Ethan.
Yeah, I move we, we, we close the planning board meeting of September the third, twenty twenty. And wish you all a good night.
I will second Ethan's speech. Thank you.
Okay, seconded by Matt, okay. Do we have an aye from Jeff?
Yes.
Do we have an aye from Jeff? Yeah. We have an aye from who else? We have an aye from Ethan. I know we have an aye from Ethan. Yes. We have an aye from Matt. And then we have an aye from Matt, and then I from me. All right, aye, aye.
Okay, let's end it.
Thank you all.
I declare the meeting closed. Thank you.
Good job.
Bye.